This is the Hiawatha City Council meeting for October 2, 2024. Call the meeting to order at 5:30 PM. I'd like for everybody, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Joe Weigle.
Here.
Ben Fidler.
Here.
Rob Archibald. Jeff Kater.
Here.
Amy Wickendall.
Number four, approval of the agenda in a motion to approve.
So, second.
First and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Number five, approval of the consent agenda in a motion to approve.
Second.
First and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Number six, citizens' input. Is there anyone in the audience who cares to speak on something that is not on the agenda? Do we have anybody on the phone that wants to speak or receive any questions? Okay, having none. Number seven, report from council members, city manager. Anybody have anything to report?
Well, a group of us went to the Iowa League of Cities Convention. In fact, the majority of us here did. It was the first time I've attended. It was great to learn a lot more about city operations and community administration.
Very well attended, too. I think there were six or 700 elected officials there and city staff there that worked at the annual commission. Well attended.
One thing I would like to draw attention to is our Pipple Awards. It was open a couple of days ago and I haven't been able to yet to drive by. But I know our city engineer, they're relying there today. And I actually stopped and had a conversation with some of the people there. They were very appreciative and supportive. I wonder if you could tell me, we had 16 people.
Yeah, there's 18 people to the waitlist, but they must be deserving. Then they asked whether we can decide for the winner. I said, yes, we are going to go to the designated. Now they're very appreciative. They love them. I asked if they could offer any feedback. Not another than maybe request an extra point from the gates. So all those people that were there, they're happy.
It was a little windy today. I actually drove by there on the way to City Hall last night. There were two couples playing out there. And most of the balls I saw on the court were all on the east side of the courts. But there was probably a dozen of those there. The wind was pretty torturous out there today, so.
Exactly. They asked if we could have things screened. I said, absolutely. So if there's any kind of rainstorm, they'll go ahead and try it over. So once they heard that.
Anybody have anything else? Okay, moving on. Number eight, proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. City of Hiawatha, State of Iowa, proclamation. Whereas, the city of Hiawatha is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all of those living and visiting our state. And whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally. And homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas, home fires kill more than 2,700 people in the United States in 2022, according to the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA. And fire departments in the United States responded to 360,000 home fires. And whereas, roughly three hundred five fire deaths happened in homes with either no smoke alarms or with no working smoke alarms. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half. And whereas, smoke alarms send smoke well before you can, alerting you to the danger and event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas, Iowa residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And whereas, Iowa residents will make sure their smoke alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas, Iowa residents should test smoke alarms at least once a month. And whereas, residents who have planned and practiced a home fire safety plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, Iowa's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, Iowa residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Therefore, I, Speaker Dodson, Mayor of Hiawatha, do hereby proclaim October 6 to the 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the state. And I urge all the people of Hiawatha to make sure their homes have working smoke alarms and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Hiawatha's fire and emergency services. That is, and sign the second day of October, 2024. And I would just like to add that I know our fire department receives calls every year for people needing help replacing the batteries in their smoke detectors. And I know we're happy to do that. And I'm sure Chief Towers can add to that.
Yeah, 100% probably. We're willing to help you maintain your safety. And we've actually started our education business starting today. So we're right back at the edge of your school. I'm talking to the Christian leader there today.
And I know with my coffee talk with the mayor sessions, I've had several people come up and tell me that they've called the fire department to help replace the cooking because they can't. And they appreciate it very much. Okay, moving on. Number nine, EDC presentation, Kurt Nelson.
About the 20th time, is that right? So let's start off. I think there's some spokes up here this year. If you have questions, follow me, jump right in. I've given you a stop state. Thanks a lot for the support this current year. And I've given you some handouts. So typically, so that's last year's end of the year report, which is also our 20 year anniversary of the organization. So there's 20 year stats in that as well. You have, our mid-year report always comes out as an email. So I printed out pretty soon, but we raise capital for this organization on a five-year pledge basis from most of our donors, comes to the government donors like yourselves. It's always a annual pledge. But I printed out a slide, one of the slides from my capital raise presentation for you all to have as individuals, if you really understand what we do and why it's important. So you think about, think about the state of Iowa. Think about the state of Iowa as a swimming pool and water level, right? The better the water level, the better the swimming, right? So you have a state that runs based upon its water level. That water level is money and all the money comes into the state, the state gives us. There are certain parts of businesses that bring that money into the state. There are certain things that cause that money to leave the state. Interstate commerce businesses are businesses that sell products and services outside of Iowa and bring money into Iowa. And those are wealth creating businesses in Iowa that are bringing that money in so that it can be spent. Like them, Grass and Skotum, Skotum's are on our board. I would say they're not the wealth creating businesses. Their businesses are as strong as the money in the community that can be spent, but they don't bring money to the community. So you've got to make sure that you're consistently bringing money in and you're consistently bringing the businesses in to bring the talent in and bring the leadership in for your community as well. At the same time, you have to pay attention to what's appealing. So last year, last year, this community spent about $500 million on the internet. Now, that's up from $50 million 20 years ago. It's $500 million that left this community. It didn't come back because we don't have the vendors here that are making the products that happens on, but he sells. So 500 million left, who replaced it? Who's thinking about who replaced it? Collins left, a lot left, right? Diamond beat, a lot left. So when you lose home office businesses, you lose the senior pay, you lose the philanthropy, you lose all of the top of the support. So it's really important to be focused on a regular basis on creating and growing the kind of businesses that keep putting water in the pool. So that's really exactly what we do. So we focus on scaling high-impact interstate commerce businesses. I'm confused with Entrepreneur Development Center name, but we just work with entrepreneurs, startup entrepreneurs, about only about, you can see in our mid-year report, only about a third of our activities are with pre-revenue entrepreneurs. Most of our work goes with existing businesses. And so I'll highlight a few of those in Hiawatha today. In 20 years, we've been doing this now, 21 years, March of September. We work with about 1,450 companies in Iowa. Those businesses have generated, with our support, over $3.5 billion in revenue growth for $884 million in startup capital. They've deployed, created over 3,500 jobs and increased wages in Iowa by $861 million. And it's important to note from all the stats that we measure, that we don't have a full-time statistician. So we don't get the stats from everybody. We just get them from those that are far below you, quickly to give them. So the numbers are really much higher than that. But the overall impact's about $5.2 billion. By all measures, it makes it one of the strongest companies in the country. Stay, I always give high office ratings about a year when it comes to digitalized business. I think overall client performance has been strong. And supply chain issues have lessened. I think the, I think the interest rate kind of softened up a bit. We, a major, a major issue for a lot of businesses. But the ag sector was down roughly 20% across all the different agencies we've worked on. That's, and that's been impacted for the state of Iowa. And finding employees continues to be difficult. We've had a pretty normal stream of new businesses. We've got 30 active clients that we work with right now. Kind of keep that number around that because it's five, there's five of us and as a battle, our bandwidth can manage. I point out in the capital raise all the time, if you doubled our money, we doubled the staff and we'd be busy. If you pulled their money, you probably pulled the staff and you'd be busy. There is no limit to the amount of work that could be done to grow businesses in Iowa, especially all existing businesses, all even rural Iowa. So this is an important point. In Hiawatha, we were thought this year with mobile demand. Remember me saying in previous years, we helped start mobile demand 21 years ago. It feels like client one, when I opened this organization. This was another year of the capital, good sector and the tech sector got a little bit depressed the last couple of years. Little demand, instead of having, working with growth, actually had to work with a little bit of softening, right? So we did engage this year in both the sales side and the marketing side of their business. So that's where some of your money went. They're typically a donor, but they're a donor and they can be a donor and they're not when they're not, right? Like a lot of our clients. So a lot of work went into mobile demand this year. And we started working with industrial energy applications, IEA, up here. And so, and it was actually Jayden, Leo and the Alliance have introduced us. And so we're going to be working to help them grow that business this year and the next. Pardon me. So, you know, when you, when you invest with us, right? You invest in creation and growth of high-impact interstate commerce businesses, new or licensed, right? Unique methodology, hands-on help, what we do with companies is very unique, not duplicated by any other organization. So growing the number of successful locally owned businesses, increasing the diversification and depth of your labor pool and the process. So ultimately building a more vibrant diversified economy. I thank you, Neil, for the support in the past. This year, we're requesting an investment of $16,000 for fiscal '26, which is $1,000 more. Particularly ask for an additional $1,000 every year. It's interesting raising capital on a five-year basis because I've done this now for 21 years. There are less home office businesses to go ask for money from. So we're actively having to ask for more money from everyone because the numbers count. We're trying to raise that number, so I'll stop if you ask questions.
I guess one, just a question you mentioned, you've worked with some different Hiawatha businesses. Any good standout examples or things that?
Well, it's like that, there's, like, so we work with mobile demand quite a bit this past year. And then there's industrial energy applications, IEA. Are you familiar with those folks? So they're right out here on voice. They typically, what they do, they work with backup generator power systems, right? These guys came out of Lion Energy and started this business up. And they grew it to kind of a sustainable level that kept them all employed. The question was, how much bigger could it be and should it be? And I think the answer to that, it would be significantly larger. So when we go with a business like that, we got a whole, we got about a two-hour intake process with all the questions we take them through. And then at the end, we try and decide out of that, okay, so what's the goal? Would you like to get bigger? If you would, I'll commit an argument to it. The answer from them is, yes, we would. Okay, well, because now it's a bunch of engineers and stuff. So now there's no marketing or sales discipline in the business, as an example, right? So now, how do you get that bolted in? How do you expand out the team? This is where we were fracturing, if you sit and bolt that in with us just stepping in and doing things fractionally for them rather than having to go out and make expensive fire. So that's what we're doing right now. So we're meeting them, our VP of Marketing, we, this week on the marketing side, really get an identification of who their target prospects are inside 100-mile radius. And once we figure out the marketing piece for that, then I'm going to be engaging on the sales side. Cool, okay, you get a prospect, how to install it, right? So that's what we're doing. I mean, you all know I'm the co-founder of Crystal Group about 900 days. I have some experience building businesses in your town. Appreciate all the work.
Yeah, I appreciate the support. We'll keep doing it. But you're saying, are you ever retired? I am retired, so what I do for retirement, I like it, so.
Thank you, Kurt. A, Consider Resolution pledging financial support for services provided by Entrepreneur Development Center, EDC, fiscal year 2025 to 2026. In a motion to approve.
So, second.
First and second, discussion? Roll call, please.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Jeff Kater.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Joe Weigle.
Number 10, Head Co presentation, Emily Kaiser.
Good evening, Emily Kaiser. Thanks for having us tonight. I am the current chair of the Head Co Board. So again, we, first off, I think we just want to really thank you on behalf of the board for your support over as long as Head Co has been in existence for the last 10, 12 years. And so again, we want to thank you for the financial support, but we also want to thank you for the support that you guys have continued to give from a staff engagement level, from a council level. Again, we really appreciate the insight. I know that Dennis and Carrie get to work with Liz on a very regular basis. And again, the two entities have just been able to collaborate at a much greater level, having some of that staff available in the house as well. So again, we just want to thank you before we really get started on behalf of the Head Co Board as well. So last year, Chad Pelley was the chair and stood up here and asked you for $25,000. And at that time, he really outlined the path of what Head Co was looking for, really identifying that opportunity to hire a coordinator, a partner, to be able to continue delivering on Head Co's mission, but also really expand the work that Head Co is able to do by hiring a professional staff. So, you know, we're really excited to share that we delivered on. And I think you've all seen that work and what we've been delivering and what Liz has brought to the table. So again, about a year ago now, back in November of 2023, Liz came on board as our Hiawatha Coordinator, Economic Development Coordinator for Head Co. So Liz was able to take her really extensive experience, both in executive leadership, her legislative experience, and then just her community context, to be able to really leverage the work that Head Co is doing and leverage the responsibility of the Co Board and again, really take that in and deliver on the mission, but also learn more along the way about our businesses, what they're doing, and how we can really be a resource. So during the Head Co State of the City event, we really heard a lot about growth and expansion here in Hiawatha. You're going to hear a lot of those consistencies in the dialogue that we're going to talk about tonight, really because that is the path that we're really trying to chart. That's the path that we're continuing to chart in the work that we're doing right alongside the staff, under your direction, as well as local partnerships with businesses as well. So in the Head Co Board voted in November to really focus on economic development areas that could be measured and used to enhance business growth for the city. So those areas really focused on business expansion and retention. So BRE, really focusing on surveys and interviewing those businesses in our community to understand their needs and desires within what they have here. Investor relations and membership, as well as strategic planning and identifying what's next for Head Co. So we were really able to use the allocation that you guys provided Head Co last year to conduct our BRE surveys, so business retention and expansion surveys. We were able to convert that into a digital survey to allow up to 520 Hiawatha businesses to participate. So that's allowing us to gather that information. We then, Liz then turns that information that she has gathered through those digital responses and does one-on-one interviews with each of those, really to dig into those responses that are most impactful. So are you expanding? If you are, when, when is that expansion? Is it in the next three, five years? And then understanding that halfway to be, continue aligning resources based on their needs as well. So again, many of those businesses, Liz has actually conducted about 75 in-person interviews. So again, those, out of that, many have revealed expansion and workforce information for the city manager and development office to continue driving that effort, continue driving additional resource development. So again, as I mentioned, in the state of the city, over the first and second quarters of the year, and trending that same way in quarter three, 63% of businesses surveyed said they would expand and 12% said that they would modernize. The type of information is significant for the city's growth. And in some cases, Liz has found land for businesses, work to find space for new businesses wanting to open, facilitated resource information from IEA on workforce tax credits for those expanding their workforce, and promoted initiatives like TIF that the city council may consider. So again, that's just one of the aspects. The second aspect that we really focused on was investor relations. So the Head Co Board voted to initiate a fee for Head Co membership. That fee really helped us fund State of the City and extra Head Co economic development expenses, which promoted that business growth. Lastly, Head Co is really going to follow your lead on strategic planning. We want to make sure that we're really aligning in what you guys identify as your path forward. We also identify as that path forward. So we're analyzing the city's new plan and we'll be acting on the plan, on our own plan, which will then support the municipal government and the business outreach side of that plan that you guys identified. So everything from village center concepts to promoting housing, from creating workforce collaborative to advancing development, Head Co has a place to inform and support growth and expansion here in Hiawatha. So again, very much like last year, our ask continues to be $25,000 for the next fiscal year. Again, we just appreciate the support you've provided in the past and we look forward to continuing our partnership in the future.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ten, Consider Resolution pledging financial support for services provided by Hiawatha Economic Development Corporation, ECO, for fiscal year 2025 to 2026.
Second.
Discussion? I know Liz has done a great job as coordinator for Head Co. And I know I spoke with many of the Head Co Board members of staff. Everybody's glad, we're glad that Liz is on board, so.
This is totally subjective, don't worry about that. But it feels like over the last year, the conversations of businesses wanting to come to Hiawatha seem to continue to increase at a faster and faster rate. So like I said, purely basic science, but cool to see.
Roll call, please.
Jeff Kater.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
We have them up here.
You have them up there?
Yeah. Well, anyway, thank you for inviting us today. My name's Sandy Weger and I'm the Director of Transportation at Horizon's NTS. I'm probably with Brandon Schulte. He is the Transportation Manager, one of two that we have. He's my support and relatively new to the role. And so if you have any questions, feel free to fill in the blanks. He's been at NTS for 12 years.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah, and so we appreciate all of the support you've given us in the past. It really helps us close some gaps in some funded areas. So I am going to just tell you a little bit about NTS, make sure if any of you are new today. So it's a little review, might go off to some numbers. We pride ourselves on filling a void in our community that where, for some, transportation's a barrier. And so we are that, we close that gap to provide transportation to work, school and training. A little bit about us, NTS stands for Neighborhood Transportation Service. It's an on-demand transportation service, curb-to-curb. And riders are empowered to schedule their own transportation. They're not reliant on the help of someone else to get them there. Riders have access to a mobile app. They can also do it on their computer or to our office. But they will use that app to schedule their rides and pay for their services through the app. But like I said, we are available to system if they need that. And we utilize a technology that can schedule these trips to be more efficient, to make as many riders on the road as we can. So backed by a great technology that promotes efficiency and effectiveness. And it's for everyone. So it's especially helpful for those who might be disabled, have wheelchair capability, have vehicles. And it also serves those who need a bike. So it's just a service that a lot of people can afford. We're convenient, so we provide night and weekend rides to work when public transportation is not available. That's the gap of being affordable. And so this is something that we're really excited about. This year, starting July 1st, we were able to reduce our rates to $3 per ride. This year, starting July 1st, we were able to reduce our rates to $3 a ride. So someone needing transportation to work and home, it would cost you $6 a day. So our rates used to be $6 per ride, and so we're able to cut that down. We're really excited to be able to promote that and got some great feedback on that. And we're reliable, so our on-time rate is 94%. And we're experienced, we've been in business since 1995. So we've got this down and I think we did a pretty good job at it. In addition to our on-demand service, we offer shuttles. And so schools, organizations, medical facilities will reach out to us for reoccurring shuttles. And we are able to do that. You know, we have special rates for the shuttles, but this is in addition to our on-demand service. But we're also available for public rental as well. And so if anybody were to ask, they just go to our website and express interest in a shuttle. And we'll work with them. It's kind of a fun offering. We're looking forward to the holidays now, we provide Christmas light shuttle. Get in the mood of the holidays. So for NTS riders, a lot of them, it's their only choice and it's certainly their best choice. 53% do not have a car or driver's license. And you know, it's funny because that's something just I take for granted. So to hear that is just a sound, you have access to that. 17% feel it's safer to drive, because they feel very safe with that, so that's a good reason. And 42% kind of more affordable than other options, you know, or Uber or taxi might be an option for some. It's not just because of the cost. And it's just convenient. 18% say it's just more convenient than other options. NTS also improves standard of living, helps the riders get a better job. 84% feel more secure because they can get that job. 78% said they earn more money. 84% achieve greater independence. And 75% said they got better benefits. So that's a pretty big win for riders. So I know this is going to be hard to see. I've just kind of charted this out, just to kind of, it's more of an illustration to show where we're meeting the needs of our community. As you look at the slide, I've got the schedule that Cedar Rapids Transit runs and then I have our schedule. And so as you look at the green on the inside of my chart, don't read the numbers, it's a hard read. You can see how we met the gap, the round gap. There's just a few areas that we do not run it, that's just because the demand isn't there. So as you look at that chart, you see that grayed out area, that those are the times when there is no service available. But I think this is a great illustration just to show how we meet communities outside of Cedar Rapids Transit. So as far as Hiawatha, I put some numbers together to show how you're impacted by this. In FY '24, we don't have FY '25 data yet. In FY '24, we provided 1,302 rides for people going in or going out or staying with in Hiawatha area. I would say our busiest days are going to be Sundays and Saturdays. And the busiest times that we run is between 6:00 p.m. and 12:00 a.m. So how do we see your riders using our service? The majority of them are using for employment. So 1,053 are actually using the rides to go to work. 99 go to school. And when we say school, that could also include life skills training, other types of classes. It could be, I don't know, it could be more than just actually go to school because of the hours required. Or maybe they needed a ride home from late classes because the Cedar Rapids Transit isn't there. We also do some medical transport. And I've included in here, just because I wanted you to see the impact it has on Hiawatha. We've only provided seven medical rides. And most of that's because clinics are working one-way run and do a few. But the majority of these are coming through a shuttle that we contract with one of the medical clinics. And so you can see how they're able to use our services to transport people from their clinic. The impact in Hiawatha, again, we've provided service for 54 individuals. That would be traveling to work from Hiawatha. If we were to include the medical shuttle that I just spoke of, that's actually 144. So you can see that the demand's there for people coming in and leaving in Hiawatha. And I did include a list of some of the top employers that we've transported to, you know, to talk about how this has benefited riders, but it's also benefited the employers. It kind of widens the pool of prospective employees by allowing these transportation services. So I think this is just a fun statistic. You're able to see the list of employers, right?
Unfortunately, no, we're not.
You can't, look at it, we go through them, okay? All right, and I'm not familiar with some of these. Dad Manufacturing, Hallmark Village, UPS, CCD Packaging, Unity Point, St. Louis Hospital, Midland Concrete Products, Terrace Clean Village, 4O's, Hiawatha Care Center, and Target. So like I said, these are people that are, they could be traveling one way or the other. So it isn't necessarily Hiawatha. Glad I asked. So in the past, you've been very generous with this and NTS truly appreciates it. FY '23, we had $12,000. FY '24, $14,400. FY '25, $13,000. We are asking for FY '26 for $13,800. And the reason that we have been made with this funding is to subsidize, subsidize the routes that Cedar Rapids doesn't cover. We are running additional routes outside of what they are assisting us with. And so any help that we give or do is greatly appreciated because it helps us pay for those routes. And that is all I had. Do you have any questions for us?
What other sources of funding you guys have aside from city governments? Have some of the businesses contributed at all or do you ask? I mean, I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, I would say most of it would be coming through grants and others. How Marion will ask us if we want to do it. But United Way is a big lender and that's how we use the money we get from United Way is to go towards setting up lenders.
Do you think that you have some, I assume this is the case with some of your riders, but you have any idea of what percentage of your riders are like? Just once a month or there are groups of, it's a primary source of their transportation every shift?
I would say it's a primary source. You know, what we do see happen is, and most of them are reoccurring riders. We know this is how they plan to get to work and home. But you know, you'll see that occasionally a lot of that, oh, you'll give me a ride home, I'll take that. And so you know, if they do, that would be helpful. They would also supplement our system.
A lot of times it's people that can be the front cars or anything halfway houses that will be riding the service five days a week to get to the front work. Or somebody that's lost the vehicle and can't drive, you know, or has never had a vehicle. The riders that do ride are typically the same riders who consistently wait for a certain period of time until they come back.
Are there any other questions?
No. Thank you, Sandy.
Appreciate all your support.
11A, Consider Resolution Pledging Financial Support for Services Provided by NTS Horizon's Fiscal Year 2025-2026.
Second.
The first and second, discussion. Roll call please.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jill Weigel.
Aye.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Jeff Kater.
Aye.
Number 12, Cedar Rapids Metro Economic Alliance Presentation, Doug Newman. Please step forward.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
First, you know, we made funding asks of many of our partner municipalities and I enjoy this process more than any of the other ones. It's a welcoming process. It's fun to be here with my community and economic development partners and hear a little bit about their story and say hi and catch up. So love the way that you guys do this and appreciate the process. Thank you, as everybody else. I got to go forth tonight, so there's a lot of things that have already been said. But it always starts with thank you and appreciation. Hiawatha has been a significant supporter of the Economic Alliance and before that, Priority One and Chamber of Commerce for many, many, many years. And appreciate all that you've done, not only financially, but so much of this is about relationship. We have a couple of new faces on the council. I look forward to spending time with you and would invite you to outreach as well. The Economic Alliance has a broad mission and you don't want to here to go through the whole thing tonight. So I'm just going to hit the highlights and the particularly relevant things, both work in community development, work in public policy, workforce, economic development, and in, again, in business support, the support of small, locally owned businesses. A lot of that kind of work that goes on in Hiawatha. And really, again, beyond the financial, a lot of those things are a two-way street. We put on programs, events, provide services, work on projects. And some people are engaged and come to that, those things. And some people are not engaged and don't come to those things. And man, have you guys been visible at our stuff, so thank you. I mean, I think Policy on the Rocks, a number of you have been at several of those. We had good representation from Hiawatha, the legislative trips, the session with the Lieutenant Governor, and just up and down a lot of our things. Obviously, Hiawatha Business Summit and other things. But thank you for that engagement. I mean, that makes our work, I think, more valuable to you and it's more fun when it's that two-way street and you're taking into kind of things that we're putting on. One thing I know that schedules prevented you from taking place on, but I do want to hit kind of as a highlight is the DC trip this year. I know you already know this, but the time and energy and focus on Tower Terrace was really the biggest priority there. There were other things that we were certainly promoting and talking about, meetings that we had to try to drive other business and community priorities. But in every meeting with the delegation and the special meeting we were set up with the DOT was about Tower Terrace and trying to drive that. That's been a key priority of ours for many, many years. We've worked together hand in hand with you and really with all the cities, right? It's one of the great regional projects and priorities that's been able to unite us all. And we continue to try to make those last steps and make sure that that project makes it to the finish line. And certainly, the DC trip this year was, I think, a great sign of success. A couple of little things that I had, not little, but things that I'm not all that involved in. I just had staff sending me a couple of quick notes, so just kind of things so that you know. A number of these, we enjoy the Hiawatha venues and we certainly don't see borders. We're looking for any of our members to engage in these things. Our Young Professionals group was at Stillwater this year. Actually, it turned out to be the most successful Impact CR meeting of the year. We had 40 people at Stillwater. They also held an event out at Prairie Woods. So and that's, again, just happenstance. We're not keeping tallies of Hiawatha this and Marion that and Cedar Rapids this. But we are trying to use great venues and great partner and member businesses and those couple came there. Two new things we did this year, that Crystal Group was really instrumental in both of those. We held a Career Services Day to try to better educate those in career service or career counseling positions in higher ed more about the businesses and the opportunities locally. They are steering college juniors and seniors to careers. And while they do a great job, they don't always know as much as they should about our local businesses. So we created a new program, really with some tours, some educations, workshops, to try to really drive home to those people the opportunities that are here, make sure that they're appropriately selling those. And then another thing that was sort of nice beyond our wildest dreams, a little bit of a trial thing, pilot program this year that we're definitely going to continue next year. But College Community, and we may do this with more school districts, College Community started this year, they had a couple of teacher in-service days just before the school year started. And those tend to be not very productive days. The teachers don't like them, the administrators don't know what to do with the teachers. It's mandated by the legislature that you've got to start the calendar on a certain day and it doesn't always work. So these days were almost like trap days. But Dr. Wheeler from College Communities asked the Economic Alliance, could you guys talk about the local economy and set up some tours so that our teachers, same exact concept that we do with colleges, that our high school teachers begin to understand better the business opportunities? We put out word to our, to businesses and had enormous response and were able to conduct tours throughout those two in-service days. And that Crystal Group was also really gracious about that, hosted. Had a really great response from the people that were able to go on that tour. So we saved the best for last, Mayor, you and I have spent a lot of time together.
Yes, we have.
Oh, we haven't quite gotten our job done.
I know. Our work will be done.
So we'll get there, we'll get there. This collaborative growth initiative that you have engaged in is, has enormous opportunity. We are trying to grow the workforce population, really grow the general population. And we've all been financial partners in this. We've got a consultants report that's kind of the roadmap. The next step in that is getting a leader to drive this initiative. And Mayor Dodson was on the interview committee along with me and the mayor from the two other cities, kind of struck out on the first round. We had some great candidates. One who just picked a different job over our job and a couple others that we set a pretty high bar. I mean, we interviewed some good people and decided we'd better take another look. So we're restarting that process, but I'm so excited about that. And I'd love to talk to you at greater length about that. I know you've been pretty in tune with that and I know that you're supportive of that. But it'll be fun to get to the details, right? Right now it's just a, it's a dream, it has some KPIs. There are some metrics out there, some hopes in terms of what we can do on population growth. We know that we need that leader in place first to really drive it. And once we get that person in place, it'll be fun to come back and talk a lot about the real steps that we're going to take. So when we get our next batch of candidates, I look forward to spending a few more days with you.
Absolutely, I'm ready.
Okay, I take any questions that you have, but also again, invite the newer faces. I'll talk all day long about the local economy, our businesses. Eighty-four Hiawatha businesses are members of the Economic Alliance, by the way. It's a higher number than a lot of people would expect out of a community of this size. But we get tremendous support from the business community here and it's a very, very important part of who we are and why we're able to provide the value that we do to the business community. So thank you.
And Doug, what is your ask this year?
Oh, same ask, stable from, I think, the last couple of years. So I believe we already been at $25,000 and would ask the exact same thing by way of support from you this year.
Any question? Okay, thank you, Doug. 12A, Consider Resolution Pledging Financial Support for Services Provided by Cedar Rapids Metro Economic Alliance Fiscal Year 2025-2026. In motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call please.
Jeff Kater.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jill Weigel.
Aye.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Number 13, Public Hearing. On the proposal to enter to a development agreement with Hiawatha Arrow L.C., we'll open the public hearing at 6:17. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the item? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition of the item? Have we received anything in the court's office?
No, we have not.
And then we have, may the court speak or?
Yes.
Yeah, would our colon would like to speak anything? Say anything?
Yes, thank you. This is Megan Carr, I represent Hiawatha Arrow LLC. I'm joining you via phone tonight, I appreciate this for my convenience, but our project is currently under construction, we're expected to open in, hopefully by the middle of November. We are currently accepting applications, this development agreement has been in the works for many months and so we're at a point where we would like to request the city council's approval and I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Any questions, anybody? No, we look forward to having you completed.
Looks pretty nice.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so we'll close the public hearing at 6:19. A, consider resolution approving and authorizing execution of a development agreement by and between the city of Hiawatha and Hiawatha Arrow LLC. Need a motion to approve?
Sumo.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Jeff Kater.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Number 14, consider resolution approving and authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the Hiawatha Fire Department and Nextera Energy, Duane Arnold Energy Center. Need a motion to approve? Sumo.
Second.
First and second, discussion?
I went to send an email earlier, but I forgot. Should it say city of Hiawatha on their agreements of Hiawatha in agreements?
This is just a repeating the outreach that's been in prior, if you have a preference of doing that. Or we can definitely address it next time.
Roll call please.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Jeff Kater.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Number 15, consider resolution approving request for proposal for splash pad vendor for Tucker Park Splash Pad Reconstruction Project. Need a motion to approve?
Sumo.
Second.
Roll call please.
Jeff Kater.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Number 16, consider resolution approving final retainage for 2024 Street Improvements Project. Need a motion to approve?
Second.
First and second, discussion? Roll call please.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Jeff Kater.
Aye.
Number 17, consider resolution approving final pay estimate number six, final retainage and accepting of improvements for the 12th Avenue and Boyson Road Intersection Improvements Project. Need a motion to approve?
Sumo.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Jeff Kater.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Number 18, placement items for next agenda or work session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
There is a motion to adjourn.
First and second, all in favor, signature five, the same, aye.
Aye.
Oh, same. During the now meeting adjourned at 6:22.
Someone else.